We do have, you can see an application since we know we finally got our PA's Mr. Hare, it's been a topic of discussion in the clear office. And before that, apparently, I think we also have a little traveling mic available for the, oh, there it is, for the citizen comments. So, we'll look forward to trying to put this technology to work as such as it is. I'm going to have the roll call now. Commissioner Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Rosales?
Here.
Mr. Dubnyk?
Here.
Mr. Schip?
Here.
I'm Richard Beller, County Judge, I'm here. Woke them with a prayer. My father, help us to serve the way we're supposed to serve, to be good public servants for our county. We thank you, many blessings this county has enjoyed, and people that work hard to put this county together in a perfect place. Help us to be good stewards of our resources. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, united, God, indivisible, the liberty and justice of all.
Do we have any citizens who would like to be heard regarding any of the agenda items this morning? If so, you can come on up and speak. Doesn't look like we do. Now, I have the reading of the minutes. Does everybody have a copy of the minutes?
Yes, sir.
On the May 13th, minutes, item number 12. What was that audit supposed to be for? I think the minutes should reflect what the audit was for.
It's the independent audit of the county.
And it was noted as not complete. Uh, correct. Can you turn?
That was correct. It was not complete, that's why we had to rescind it.
Correct.
Has it been completed now?
No, sir. They are still waiting for some clarifying information from the treasurer.
And when is the normal completion date of this?
We normally have it by March.
By March? And we still don't have the information?
Correct.
I'd like that note, annual county audit.
That was just the agenda item. That's how the agenda item read.
Well, so if we want to know what's on the, what do the minutes mean, we have to go back to the agenda to find out what the minutes mean?
No, that's exactly what was on the agenda. The way that it's written is how the agenda read, and I, there was no action taken. So, that's exactly what the, what the agenda said to begin with.
If these, I recall, there was something made that the audit had not been completed yet. And apparently, it still hasn't been completed, and according to what, it's due to information not yet coming from the treasurer's office that they need to complete.
All I'm saying is, I think the minutes should reflect what the audit actually was. They'd ordered up the dog pound of what, you know, the annual county audit.
It does say what it is, Pete. It says the independent audit. That is of the counties.
That's point thirteen.
That's how it always is. We don't hire outside firms except for in specific instances by order by court or in any individual department audits. This is just the county as a whole, the independent audit.
It's clear to everyone else, I'm sorry. And I think seventeen should state, did that, uh, seventeen forty-seven, did that occur? So, clear what it is for. Thank you, Judge, that was, you know, seventeen forty-seven.
It is. It is.
In other words, I'm only asking for more clarity here.
But the clarity should come from the agenda item. I don't change the agenda item. I don't change how the agenda is written to begin with. I just copy the agenda item and then I write the action. That's all I do. I'm responsible for recording the action of the court.
Okay. Number seventeen, actually, the county grant collection and shirt refund grant program was enabled by seven forty, seventeen forty-seven. I think that's what it is. Probably the, you know, the. Any other comments on the minutes? If I have motion to be approved?
I'm ready. I'll set it there.
Any favor?
I have.
Any true proof? Those were both minutes from May thirteen, and it's May thirty-three. Next, uh, item eight, presentation, supported by representative grid papers. Yes, sir. Do you need to make a presentation?
I could.
Yes, sir. Do I come up front, or? Whoever you'd like to address. Yes, sir. Let me leave these for you, so you can see what we're talking about. These are, these are the grids that are manufactured in Houston, Texas, and in Maxwell, Texas. I would like to introduce myself. My name is Jack June, out of San Antonio, and I have a company called Bio Pub Works. And, but we were approached by two grid papers out of Houston to represent them, and it's only been about two or three months since we've been together, and we think we have great potential with this particular product. Primary use of the product is to build and maintain gravel type roads. And in the process of building these, they're made out of a hundred percent recyclable plastic. They withstand one hundred and twenty thousand pounds per square inch, sixty tons axle, which takes care of practically every, you know, the big oil trucks that the county would have too for maintaining and building roads. And the way you would install these is to build a grade of about four to five inches, depending on the soil condition. You lay down then a layer of gravel, and then you fill in the holes, come back and you fill in the holes with small pieces of gravel. And this is what gives you the strength. And you eliminate the kicking up of gravel from breaking windows and automobiles. And it's a, the other feature, big feature is that it's a dust bater. You don't, you're not kicking up a lot of dust and causing a lot of dust for livestock and the crops and the, for the ranchers. And it, uh, we have a, the grids are, it comes, they're interlocking, and they form, you pick up, there's three hundred, there's five, three hundred and fifty-four pieces on a forty-eight to forty-eight pallet. And the construction people just pick them up and lay them, lay them down, and then fill in with the, with the gravel. And this is a bonding agent. The more go, the more trucks go over, cars go over, the stronger this, this particular item gets. So, it, uh, it's a great item for maintaining highways, your gravel, county roads. And also, then we find it too, that it's been very useful for parking lots, of all things. We didn't realize that, but that's just like a staging area. I was down in the Cattula area, at Coria Springs, and I know that the driving, and I noticed a, a lot of the holding areas for the oil people were, had water after this huge rain that we had, had water in their parking lots, and there was no trucks there, they couldn't get in and everything. So, it, and right now, we have an application for a company that sells the water, recycles the water, and the rate, the trucks are getting in there and just tearing up the roads, and they're putting down, they put down this, and it's just a test run. This is where we are, and our stage in our company is really doing testing right now. But we know it works. Our company out of Houston, we did a hundred and thirty thousand square foot parking area, staging area down in Refugio, Texas, in a Stripes, believe it is Stripes, uh, convenience store. And in the back, it's three and a half acres, and it's using it as a staging area for trucks to spend, like the trucker's going to spend the night or so there, and of course, they go in and buy stuff at their convenience store. So, that's basically what it's, what it's for, and for the maintenance and the construction and using that. And we have plenty of manufacturing facilities in Houston and in Maxwell, Texas. The cost is a dollar eighty-four cents per square foot, sell it by the square foot. And I don't want to take up any more of your time. I do thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to visit with you today. Any question?
How long does it take? How long does it take to use this place out?
I'm sorry?
How long does it take to use this?
It's about a man hour of a thousand feet per, per hour.
That's, that means that whole road is closed down for that time?
Well, yeah, you'd have to, you'd have to think four inches, you know, if you'd like to build your base, so you'd have to. Your total use of this for new construction? New construction or where you're repairing asphalt roads and maybe going back, going to gravel type? It only works, it's only designed for gravel. And these, these, they're interlocked. And we have a video, and I asked that you would, I sent the video here. I don't know if you, if you got to see that, Judge. Could you just place the lay of this down as a mat, then put the material down? Or roll over it, or what? Yes, you can. You can place it down and roll all over it with it, start using it. Have you visited with Road and Bridge people back? Uh, not yet. No. Doesn't seem to be probably the appropriate thing to do, is go see the Road and Bridge department. Is that in the county, your county? See what they think of property. Well, it's. What you're going to be doing for rubber, not that bad, is you can sell the Road and Bridge department and the consulting engineer on the idea of, or something. All right? Very good. Where, is he in this building here, or? He's right there. He's right there. It took you so long to get here. Yeah, you'll be free to consult with him. Okay. Good. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I have a question. Is there any recommended speed limitation on this type of road?
None whatsoever. Okay. Very good. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Next item is regarding a request from the local farm bureau. Item number nine. Farm Bureau is opposed to a proposed EPA Resolution Act request, where they're, according to the farm bureau's burden, asking for an expansion of their jurisdiction under the Clean Water Act, uh, to include, to expand the definition of waters of the United States, so it can be interpreted to include any place where water collects and or runs off. And they're saying it can include barages, farmlands, fields, and turn roads. And they're afraid the normal farmer and ranch activities can be interrupted by some of these, some of their regular activities, and it could be subject to unnecessary regulatory burdens and excessive fines. And they're saying that it could also burden county governments. And they're asking us to sign a resolution, which is the last basic of such an agenda. Just letting the EPA or the federal government, Congress know that this county is opposed to such an expansion of the EPA's authority under the Clean Water Act. That's what the farm bureau is asking for. They're saying that this resolution has to be submitted honor before June twenty-three, two thousand and fourteen. This is sent to me by Zach Yantl, the president of Orange County Farm Bureau. Somebody have any questions or comments? Yeah, if someone wants to make a version of discussion, we've discussed, if you want to make a motion, make a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve. Item number nine, as presented.
I'll second it.
Unfair.
I have a question, let me clarify. You said our resolution would be in opposition to this, to further expansion?
Yes, sir. The resolution has, uh, I suppose what we'll do is get a copy of that made, signed or something like that. And then we'll send it on to the farm bureau and let them forward it to whoever they need to. Actually, there's a, an email or a website address they give to do this in the farm bureau letter. Item number ten, discuss, prove, disprove, this is a geographic information system product issued in Orange County Inspector Products, Project, Science, nine one one, and be provided as is without warrants of any kind in Orange County, in person, in display, and all of the press and applied warranties, inputting out limited duty, applied warranties, merchantability, and fitness protection purposes, and signed by Jamie Law.
Basically, it's just a disclaimer to put on our maps when we print them, I guess, kind of like a, for lack of another word, UIA, you know, just covering that from any type of board to be that someone who's actually says, oh, this is wrong, really is wrong. There's something to put on our maps to cover.
Recommended by ACOG or?
I'm sorry?
Recommended by ACOG?
Yes.
Okay. And this will be placed where?
On the maps that we print.
Okay.
Just for the public, because soon, I will want to come back to the legislature's court to start selling maps to the public, so this will be just printed on everything that we print, as far as we know.
It's a, it's an effort to weigh warranty. By us, as we're saying, the warranty is weighed. I'm not sure it's going to be effective. It doesn't hurt to make, to put it on there. I'm not sure whether, unless the consumer, or the purchaser, or the customer, wherever they are, has received it, probably actually signs and agreement, waiving their rights or saying that they accept that, but this, I don't think it hurts them, because it's laying it around.
We could also print one and have it signed, and then to, that would work.
Who do these map, who are these maps provided to? Companies, individuals?
Mm-hmm. I also check them for the county, um, different offices, so I just want to put it on everything so that my work is kind of covered. I know ACOG does it for all of their maps, and she kind of suggested we do it as well, so we're going to start printing for the public. That would be okay.
I make the motion for item number ten to approve it.
I'll second it.
Unfair. All right. And let's consider, if you're selling these things, be aware, so we're giving consideration to you for the maps. Maybe part of the consideration to get the map, like to weigh this warranty, and I think we probably need to have them sign something to that effect when they do it.
Okay.
What thoughts about that? You might check those out, see if they're.
Okay, I'll do that, and I'll give them.
Thank you. For now, put them on there. Okay. Number ten, discuss, approve, disprove, adopting a standard sign for all nine one one rural addresses issued. Thus, if the addressing sign will be thirty dollars, which will be added on to the nine one one addressing application, they will be applied to the old addresses issued in order to implement the standard sign.
Basically, what I wanted to do is, right now, all the oil field and all the well sites have to have, by the road commission, have to have the name of the sign, I'll put it for you on the second of Thursday. They have to have the name of the oil, of the, how many acres, and what county it's in, and a emergency phone number. That's on every location. Now, if you go out there to the well site on our county roads, there, no, basically, half of them have addresses. So, and most of them are printed wherever they want to. Some are little, some are small. This is just an example of one. The address is here. So, I'm just an EMS, or just any type of person that's looking for the site, you don't know, there's so much information. You don't know where address you're at. So, there are so many well sites. Another one has it issued here, the address. So, what I'm wanting to do is make this sign, and what we'll do is when they come in to get an address, they have to fill out an application. Right now, we don't have a fee. What I'm wanting to do is have a thirty dollar fee, and what's along with that fee will come this sign. And I already talked to Road and Bridge, where we can use their machines to make the sign. Of course, all the material will come out of my budget, the nine one one budget, and so this is what I'm wanting to do, so that I'll be able to post it on everybody who's entrance, even residents, when they come in.
How, uh, I want to change the case, is we're saying that they come in there to their well site.
The address.
Address.
Their location.
Okay. And you're just talking about oil gas?
Mm-hmm.
I'm, I'm talking about.
Yeah, everybody.
Everybody, I would say, if I'm building a franchise somewhere, I need an address, I'll have to pay to get one of those signs. These say to it that you must.
We don't have a code enforcer, but I'm hoping that they pay the thirty dollars to say, hey, I paid the thirty dollars, so I'm going to post it, unless you hire a code enforcer to do other things that along with that comes.
I understand your objective, I'm just trying to make, understand whether or not these lengths will be accomplished.
Well, I know with the oil site, the, I mean, the oil field companies, I already talked to several about just my idea of it, and they were all for it. For the safety part of it, anybody going out there to our EMS, or just their guys, or companies looking for the site, they would post it. Now, as far as residential, I don't know if they'll post it, because I know a lot of them make their own signs, and have them on their dates and stuff, but as far as all the oil field sites, which is more important, they would have an address and post it. I'm going to try to make it so it's safer and faster to find. Worth something, though.
I understand your objective, and I think that's, that's well taken. I'm just trying to think of how we can make sure it actually happens.
I can go out there, but like I said, I can, if they don't post it, they're not going to, I, like, the same, hey, you need to post it.
Okay.
I'm just hoping that with the thirty dollar fee, they'll all post it.
Why do you put up with thirty dollars?
I'm, I'm just hoping there.
But it's cost of the sign, but what about the labor's making?
Yeah, that we would make it.
Who's we?
Me and Helen. She is on my office too. She's.
With what?
Of Road and Bridge's machines they have in there.
Should Road, Road and Bridge, I thought, that was the purpose of the sign machine, was for them to make all the signs for the county.
That's what we're doing. That's part of.
But then they should, your, your sign tech will make these signs?
We can do that, or we can try them, where they can do it.
I'd rather your sign tech make them, because that way, it's from one person in that machine, not so-and-so messed up my machine.
I agree with that.
I mean, that's my personal opinion.
It's workhorse. I mean, I'll work with whoever needs to make them issue what information they need.
Have you checked with any, just sign manufacturer, see what some like that would cost?
What, the whole set? The whole?
Yeah, just, you know, where, if you weren't using County Road and Bridge people to do it, or sign making department, what would it cost to buy it?
I didn't, because I know we have a machine within the county that we can make signs, so I don't see why we should have someone else. But I mean, I can look and do it, and that's what you're wanting to do.
Is it reflective, right?
Mm-hmm, yes. There are reflective.
All right.
What it is, is our normal signs that we've had. What it is, is our normal signs that we've had, ordered already, they average about fifty dollars a sign. And that's not this sign, this, your, this different sign, the top sign, about fifty dollars a sign.
That's labor and everything?
That, that's buying it directly from the, the.
Oh, buying from business?
Yeah, the, yeah, the.
Okay, business, so you think something like that, uh, fifty dollars?
Yeah.
All right, and then, this thirty dollars, if it was made in Roden Bridge department, is that adequately gonna cover the expense, as well as whatever manpower at the time for the department?
But if we go up there and buy the sheeting itself and everything, that is real reason, that will be the backing, the sheeting, everything that we got. And we're not using the high intensity, so this here will work out good. And we're already, Roden Bridge is already putting up five roads, so, I mean, it's said just when installing it, they can do it for sale.
Ms. Allen?
I checked in with, uh, we had been negotiating this, uh, last week. I checked into Vulcan Signs, a company the county has used before, and they can make the same sign on aluminum for twenty-four, uh, dollars and forty cents per sign, if you order fifty of them.
That's where we're ordering the material from, um, Vulcan Signs, I didn't have to.
And they'll make the sign with the reflective backing and the high intensity coating with the, uh, with the address.
Twenty-four dollars?
Twenty-four dollars and forty cents per sign, yes, sir.
Whenever I had, uh, the.
Fifty, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Like, to get fifty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I just don't, and I don't want that either, if I have someone coming in residential, or say, you don't get fifty signs, I'm gonna have to wait to add up to the fifty, and we're gonna be waiting two, three months to get an address posted.
Plus, the county has purchased the equipment to do sign making, sometimes we utilize it. And we have an employee specifically assigned to that position.
And oil, um, I did talk to the oil companies, and as long as we give them a sign, they have their own manpower to support that.
I, I know they do, so, don't always get around to that, what, what to do, all right, raise your.
Mr., I'm going to, yeah, that is a lot, apparently not active state, that has set nine one one rural addresses. Uh, and I, and I had taken a second, obviously, I'll assert the patient, that the oil companies are more important than residents that are in the county. Uh, this is, if this is the case, I would recommend that the commission court not approve this unless it's for everybody that lives in the county. And we standardized this thing, and we discussed it in two thousand and twelve, when Sharon Chesser was the nine one one coordinator. In addition, we don't make mandatory, that everybody's compliant with nine one one, which happened some time back. And I can tell you, on my county road, not everyone's in compliance. And if you're gonna do something proactive, if you're waiting for me, or somebody else on my county road to go in and ask for a sign, it isn't gonna happen.
Well, I would post it in the newspaper report, see, I'm only adding them for outside of the county.
Either make it mandatory, or, or just rip the oil stuff and forget it. That's the problem we've had right now, and had that for years.
Mandatory for everybody, even the inside the city limit, is what you're saying, or just?
Talk about the county, instead of rural areas.
Yes.
And I thought, the city has an address, and police and fire department respond to that address.
Yeah.
If I have a problem, my neighbor has a problem, County Road three thirty, unless I'm waiting for them on the road, they'll go right by because there's more access on his, upon his gate. And that, the same thing goes for no two being done on the county roads. If you don't make mandatory, to make a sign, send them with bill, they're not gonna come ask you for a sign. So either, we either do this job, or quit kicking and send it out of road.
I can send out letters, send over the warnings, but even if.
Or if they want it on their gate, they'll put it on their gate, if they don't want it, they're not gonna put it, if they want EMS to get there, they'll put it.
But nine one one, when nine one one, I do too. Or when the nine one one system came out, it said that this is a mandatory requirement, and this county has the problem with most counties, I know in Wilson County, it's enforced. Everybody has a nine one one, or a sign on their gate. Not here, other counties don't, I'm not saying that, I'm not saying.
Wilson County, officers, health, safety officer, they go through this, okay?
All I'm, all I'm saying is, if we're gonna do this, it's just right.
You got, you know, you got issues in the city too, that don't have any address, it's not just in the rural areas, it's very important.
I know, what I understand you're proposing to me is this, that from this point forward, everybody makes an application for nine one one address, with that thirty dollar fee, you're gonna give them a sign, how long would it be before they get their sign?
Uh, we dedicated a Friday afternoon to making the signs, because, um, as my understanding, Roden Bridge is closed half the day on Friday, so we'd be able to go in there and make the signs that day, so within a week, they'd be issued their signs.
Michael, do you guys have any problem with, uh, these young ladies going in there and working on those signs?
Honestly, I don't, it, it, I don't see a lot of them, they're trained, you know, and they're using their material and everything, I, me personally, I don't, but you know.
Well, again, he's gonna be leaving nine one one, so it's not gonna affect you, it's gonna affect whoever takes, takes over nine one one.
That would be part of their adopt description, so whoever does come in to get hired, that's part of their adopt description, that somebody may have to take in.
How many signs a week were you talking about, Matt?
Um, right now, like I said, the oil field company, they, we're, they're actually gonna do all their backlog, I'm talking about oil field companies now, we're gonna have to talk about many residential that are already there, well. But as far as the oil field companies, they're gonna be giving all their, um, sites that are already there, so I would have to go in and say, hey, we're gonna do this much this week, I would have to make a law.
Well, if you're gonna, if the oil field companies are, if you're gonna do the backlog for the oil field companies, wouldn't it be more sensible to go ahead and get a list of all the addresses for all these companies? If Susanna has called Vulcan, say, all right, Vulcan, here we are, we need two hundred signs at twenty-four dollars a sign. And if they do that, and everything else from that point forward, go ahead and actually construct the sign.
Sure.
I mean, I don't, am I, am I missing something?
That'll work, we'll do that.
That's how, three.
Not only that, you might have got stuck with like, who knows how many signs you might have every Friday afternoon, ever, just trying to catch up with everything, my.
Sure, we could do both, and then from that point on.
And now, I think we ought to also study, uh, the prospect, and how do we go about, uh, changing to make inclusion of those addressing mandatory for all rural residents.
No, I, I agree, Doug, that, that we should put something in the paper if we adopt this, and, and offer to the citizens of Carnes County that, hey, we're standardizing our nine one one sign, if you want a, a current, if you're, you know, you're an old, an older resident, you've been there a while, you want a nine one one sign, contact the nine one one office, and for thirty dollars, wherever, we will construct you a sign, and it, it's up to your responsibility, having signs coming, if they have to, to put that up, or some time actually.
I also, excuse me, I think you need to make it mandatory, they can buy it from the county for thirty dollars, or they have to buy their own, but they have to meet the standards.
So maybe give certain specifications of the sign.
What I wanted to do was, uh, nine five thirty, we're literally just a five letter, so that would be the standard sign.
Yes, and you've got, size or anything else?
And then, I would, I don't see a problem with people, residents coming in, because I've had several phone calls, and all this, um, you know, are they gonna find me, do you know if they're gonna find me? So I don't think they'd have a problem coming in and printing the sign, they're worried about the, I miss the first.
Do we need to adopt a normative to that effect or something, or do you put that to the county?
I suppose we would, and, uh, we're not able to do that, our agenda doesn't allow for us, or, so, yeah, but I think that's what we have to do, is put that on our next agenda.
I have a, a bit of a concern as far as the nine one one goes.
Yes, ma'am.
The rural areas, um, I, you know, several years back, my neighbor was spared by a hay cord, and, um, the, the ambulance couldn't get down the road. So they had to get in their vehicle and meet them in the highway, so I'm a little bit, one, one of my questions is, is that they can't get to the residence, then get down the road. That's a bit of a problem in making that mandatory. And another question is, do you have a, a, an approach that, you know, a, a well site is temporary, for the most part? I mean, are, are these addresses going off the docket when the rig is completed? I mean, we don't wanna keep these things on a nine one one book if, if we're terminating them.
I would think certainly, as long as there's commercial activity, if there's one, there's a well in operation, it should stay in effect. You know, when it's plugged, abandoned, all that.
Well, that's what I'm asking you, do you take them off the books once that, that completion is over, that address and that, that location is drilled? So you don't end up with a tremendous amount of addresses that are not active?
I don't think, uh, the completion of the well wouldn't be the end of the period of time when there'd be a risk of problem. I, I think you're, that won't happen until that well is plugged and abandoned, and hopefully, that won't be happening for a long time. But, uh, when it does, I mean, I, I don't know if that, that may be something you need to address, it's.
I think it's basically, as long as there's an entrance at that location, that sign has to stay there, regardless of they.
So, where is that?
Mike, would you have a problem having the other employees, other than in your department, your trained sign man, having access to your offices when you aren't there, or your staff's not there?
I was there on Fridays.
She is, okay, well, she said Friday afternoon, so I didn't know.
I kept space there all day Friday, and I have a skeleton, skeleton crew out for that, so there's always somebody.
Okay.
Yes, sir, one other thing that I, in fact, I just don't know, is nine one one system wants, wants an address and a sign for a geographic location. There's GPS data for the sheriff's department, fire department, and EMS, is that gonna be updated? So that if they got notified, County Road three thirty, they plug County Road three thirty into that system, and they drive right to it? Or if they still left, you know, looking for the spotlight at the gate side, and they drive down the road?
What?
When, when somebody gives you an address, and you, you issue an address, you turn around and take that address number, and you issue it to the nine one one, to the nine one one system?
We're all linked together, this was.
Okay, but, but I mean, like, today, if I went and got me, if I had a place, and I put X, Y, Z, County Road W, and then turn around, uh, within, you know, a day or two, so all of a sudden, the sheriff or fire or event has to come out there, they can plug it to their system, and nine one one system, and it'll be able to locate it?
They can, I was, they're giving a range, that's what I'm saying, if this were more, more accurate.
But, but on their mapping system, inside the sheriff's office, on, on their control panel that they have, they'll be able to locate that as well, right?
Yeah. That's what, that's where we're all mixed together, I don't know exactly what pops up on their screen, I don't work there, but.
Jamie, who do you turn that information, if you want you to issue an address, who do you send it to?
To ACOG, ACOG is the one where y'all get your information.
Yes, you know, but, like, yeah, and it might take it longer than usual, because I know Verizon, some of their addresses, we've been kind of not finding their addresses, like, right away, like everybody else.
Joe?
I know, I know ACOG is working on it, and when, it's gonna be a little bit longer for the access to show up on our computer, they use ACOG's.
But there's gonna be another, uh, I guess I'd say, another, uh, updated system coming out, and that should take care of all those issues. I guess, what GPS is, my great friend is driving in my car, and I have a little GPS, it, it works great sometimes, and sometimes it doesn't. And, uh, I guess your, uh, sign is kind of a backstop, you know, so that if it doesn't tell you, that's the spot, and you're out behind there, there's a sign that says, that's the spot, I know that's the spot, right?
Exactly.
What I wanna do is, uh, I think it sounds to me like, for this big backlog, she wants to take care of, well, you have Vulcan signs, do that, um, and see.
Can we, can we come back on this next month? Uh, I agree with her, maybe getting Vulcan to do that, but next month, let's just come back to business with the specifications, uh, September ordinance, and maybe, as well as some type of a statement for the, uh, res, current residents to have, be able to give an updated sign.
Sounds fine, and we'll, uh, I think your idea is good, I think your concept's good, what you're trying to accomplish. We're gonna make sure that we, we do it, do it one time, make sure we do it right, and I think, possibly, making it mandatory would be a good idea.
Okay.
Can we authorize her to order signs from Vulcan now?
We, we can, uh, we can authorize her to order signs, but there still won't be any, we, we don't know exactly what the spec should be, we want it to those specs, or some others, uh.
Does your money in your budget count to order that backlog?
That's what I would talk to you about, I want to just know if it's gonna get approved or not, and then get with you on.
Well, let's, let's, it looks like the, the commissioner wants to approve something like this, wants to get signs up.
Just get it in a right.
We're just, we're human, we can't accept it, but, okay?
That's perfect, and I'll get with you on everything, get it correct.
And then we'll put another addendum up for next meeting, and see if we can have all our ducks arobed, but, okay?
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your attention. Oh, yes, sir. I was gonna steal him. There's a real bad pothole on nine nine I had in mind for that. Put a, uh, number twelve, discuss, approve, disprove, authorize EMS administrator to raise EMS ambulance rates, bring them in line with the current averages. As per assembly here of AR management, is offered by Dennis Keller.
Okay, uh, just to refresh, uh, AR management is our, our ambulance billing company. Uh, when I first took this position in October, uh, our rates, uh, the EMS ambulance rates looked kind of low, as far as an average went, uh, in my opinion. I had asked Sam back then, at that time, to kind of track for the next six or eight months, and kind of see where the, where the rates were, uh, where our rates were in a county compared to other counties that were maybe close to the same, and not just counties, but other county ambulances, private services that serviced areas, rural areas, um, so we'd get a better idea of where we needed to be. I have no idea when the last time that ambulance rates for the county were set, or raised, or, uh, I, I, I don't have that answer for you. Uh, uh, I know Wilana and I had talked about it several times, that we both thought that our rates were kind of low. Uh, so this, these are the numbers that Sam came up with to kind of put us on a, on an even plane with everybody else. Uh, ambulance billing, well, any kind of medical billing right now, it's, it's, a lot has to do with whoever the provider is, if it's Medicare or Medicaid, we're not gonna get any more money from them by raising our rates, however, when you get into the private insurance, the work comp side of things, uh, even some private pay individuals, um, we're going to up, increase our, our incoming monies, uh, which will better offset our cost than what we're doing right now.
Dennis, what's the standard of Medicare or Medicaid reimbursement?
Well, um, it depends on the type, if you're anywhere from, from four fifty up to five hundred dollars on the call, um, your, um, your mileage is around twelve dollars, uh, a mile, and that has to do with rural to first twenty-five, you get this amount, next twenty-five, you get this amount. If it comes from an urban address, like San Antonio, then it's, which we don't do that, but, you know, out here in the rural area, sometimes the mileage varies a little bit depending on the actual address that you pick the patient up. Like rungies, we're considered rural in Carnes. Like rungies, we're considered rural in Karnes City, and Kennedy, rungies considered super rural. So it's up and down, up and down. But if we don't increase our rates as ambulance companies, then Medicare's never going to increase their rates to pay us more. I mean, over the course of the last 10 or 11 years, I took somewhere around a 15 to 20 percent cut in Medicare payments over those timeframes because people wouldn't catch up to where we needed to be.
Where are these proposed rates coming from? Are these rates that are actually charged by other counties nearby?
It's an average, some other counties nearby is charged upwards of $1,200 for a call and $17, $18 mileage. Some charge around the 700, 800 mark. And I just got these numbers straight from Sam Lady. It's very hard to call another ambulance provider. Of course, counties are different. You know, we've been trying, I've been trying to get rates from counties. They don't always get back with it. So I used our guy as our billing company because he knows what everyone's rates are and he sees them. I asked him to kind of set us a precedent. I can tell you that 10 years ago, as a private service, I was charging $750 for an ALS emergency call, which that is advanced life support, and that was 10 years ago.
So your billing company is telling you that our rates are lower than anybody else's?
We are some of the lowest.
I think the current rates was pulled out of the ledger, $500 for ALS emergency and non-emergency. BLS is $450, and the mileage is $10 per mile.
From personal experience, I can tell you that it is a big cap. They came and picked up my wife in one car, a severe accident.
What is that?
$635.
Good, so there.
From the Pville, the Pettis, and back.
Am I having any comments, Spencer, about the proposed rate?
I think there's one person we need to ask. Wanda, do you think we need to increase rates?
I think we do because we're losing, we could recover a lot of our costs if we collect more on our calls.
And would you, do you have a recommendation?
I would go with what Sam, the billing company's recommending because he has access to those figures all across the state.
What percent of your billing now do you have that's, has not been collected or cannot, can't be collected?
That we can't collect or say hasn't been paid?
Your billing, they don't pay.
I can find that out, Shelby. I don't have that number right in front of me.
It just all goes right back to the general fund, right?
Yep.
It doesn't go to an EMS account?
No, because EMS is part of the general fund.
Okay.
Well, Lou, that we've adopted current proposed rates as presented out of number 12, but ALS emergency run will go from, current rate is $500, will go to $800. ALS non-emergency, current rate $500 to $700. Basic life support, BLS emergency, $450 to $700. BLS non-emergency, $450 to $550. Mile is promoted mile. Promoted mile means from the scene to the hospital. Or they're in the location, and it's from $10 a mile to $50 a mile. Did you use your rates, say, somebody gets called to an ambulance, you know, somebody calls for an ambulance, but yet they don't call for an ambulance?
Like, say, a wreck?
Yeah.
That we get dispatched to that nobody actually on scene?
Yeah.
The only time that we bill for that, that's not even payable by Medicare if we don't transport a patient. Only time we bill for that is if we're called to a residence by someone and we actually do something to treat the patient. In other words, if grandma falls down and we go pick grandma up, just put her back to bed and everything's good, we don't charge people for that. I look at that as good PR for us. However, if we went there, grandma was having a diabetic episode, we gave her some bupogon and D50 and a little bit of IV fluid, but then she came around, she was fine, and refused treatment, then we bill back because we actually provided a service.
That's what we should do.
There is motion, we have a second? All right, all in favor?
All right.
Effective when? Effective when? Immediately?
Immediately.
Today? All right, number 13. Discuss, approve, disapprove. Hiring of Seeking Edge R. Perp. to do salary survey for F. Y. Y. 2015 salaries for county employees on 2501.
Last Monday, we had a meeting with all the department heads with salaries, and everybody was asked to bring the information in from other cities or local businesses. And we had a pretty good meeting, met about an hour and a half or so. And during the course of the conversation, it was brought up that Malana and the county judge had talked about doing the outside counseling again this year and using Seeking, which is the same company that the city of Karnes City had used. Of course, we brought up the conversation that we had done that last year, we spent a lot of county dollars for a survey that basically got the traction. And so we were very concerned with that. From what I understand, they only charge the city of Karnes City about $2,500. It took about two weeks for them to get the survey done and back to the city. There is money in the budget, yes, the one, money in the budget for a salary survey, and do that again. To do that again. They basically already have the local market. It was only, it was just a couple of years ago that they did Karnes update a little bit. They have the local market already done. We looked at their reports from the city of Karnes City and the city of Kennedy, and you would be surprised at what their officials make and their employees make compared to what ours are making. So we threw some numbers in. We all had different ideas of what the starting base should be, at least for anybody that's been with the county, and how to add extra to the years of service. And all the department heads that were there kind of agreed that they wanted this Seeking thing. So I just put it on the agenda for Commissioner's Court to discuss.
Talking with the mayor of Karnes about Seeking and how pleased they were, were not with their services. They were well pleased, thought they'd gotten a good survey. I understood that the survey that was done previously was not well accepted, it was not. Most of the people involved didn't seem to think it had been put together very well, didn't really cover the subject. So I think it'd be a good idea just to make sure we're, you know, we're now in a very competitive economy for good employees. And you have to be able to pay good salaries. And it works both ways, paying good salaries is going to be a good sword. You keep the employees satisfied, hopefully, and allow them to make a living and support their family. But also, it kind of serves as a sword too, because, you know, if you have a good salaried job, you know that somebody else would be glad to have that job. And if you don't do a good job on your position and your supervisor decides they've got to have better help, they can actually find somebody instead of good luck getting someone to take my place.
Right. And it opens up the market, opening there are job openings for more people to apply for jobs.
I, we want to be realistic and have all kinds of raise for these various employees. But we do need to pay people appropriately. And I think to get a good idea of what other people are similarly situated to pay, I think this sort of a good idea. Malana, I don't know how much it will cost exactly. We need to get Seeking to use the proposal. As I understand it, based on her position analyzed, it's not her employee, because some employees did the same thing.
Correct.
And I don't think we can say, well, we'll get it for $2,500 like the city did. Because the city has fewer positions, you know, like them. But we can analyze that real quickly and get somebody on this. Now, we need to have this done as soon as possible.
Okay, well, what I need to do, I guess.
For it to be effective, because we're trying to put together a budget.
Right.
And if we don't do this any good, if this comes in after the budget's already done, the tax rate's already set, the horse is already down, already in the barn. But let's, go ahead, you start.
Well, what I could do is give each department head to, and I think they've already done job descriptions on their staff, on the chief deputy clerk and the deputy clerks, how many positions they have in that, how many positions we're actually talking about, and Malana, I can review those and make sure we have a number and send to Seeking for proposal by the end of the month, or it's not sooner?
As soon as possible, it'd be effective.
So you want us to do it, or one of us to do it?
Yeah. What I'm doing, I'll talk to Seeking and tell them, you know, yeah, that's what we want to do, and I'll put them in touch with you guys.
Okay.
And then they will tell you what they need. And they'll probably also be able to assist you with analyzing what, how many positions are and that kind of thing.
Just from what I understand, I think they did the job descriptions for the city. The city manager told me that they actually did the job description, but the employees didn't do it.
I think they come in, visit with you, and find out what's going on.
They may ask you for your last appraisal.
Yeah, well, they're going to ask you what actually they do, but they wanted to do their own job descriptions.
And I think what we all get about is just 18 clerks, 30 deputy clerks, 72 deputies, whatever.
But they didn't accept the city's job description.
Right, okay.
I think they're kind of setting themselves.
Okay.
All right. Do I have a motion on that?
So does the agenda item let us, what does it let us do?
Job descriptions.
Let's see what it says.
The officials were going to hire, or is it like?
It says to hire Seeking.
Yeah, we're looking at.
So we needed to do a proposal, so we're going, I actually don't miss one of them, so we should get that to do.
And this would be for officials and employees, correct? Because, of course, officials have certain statutory duties that would have to be taken into consideration in any type of job description.
I would assume that's correct. And, Wanda, when you said we have money in the budget to be allocated to this, what do you?
We have a budgetary item right now for a personnel policy manual that Shelby had requested to be carried into this budget. I don't remember if it's 40 or 45 thousand.
I think it's 40,000.
So we can use that money for developing our job descriptions, et cetera, and our salary.
Well, I think barring Seeking not being able to do it, when the amount within that budgetary consideration, I'd like to put it, I have a, have us put an authorized hiring, Seeking to do it, contingent upon them being able to meet that budgetary, you know, hopefully a lot less than that.
Right, well, we won't divulge.
A lot of leftover, right?
Yeah.
But I.
Is that your motion, good?
Yes.
I second that one.
Okay. So.
All in favor?
All right.
Right.
So do you want to contact them?
Yes, I will.
Okay, that's fine. And then direct them toward us. If anything, great, that'll work, thank you, sir.
Okay, number 14. Discuss, approve, disapprove, requesting proposals for employee health, life, and LTD benefits for fiscal year 2015. Wanda?
The court has always gone out for proposals for our employee health, life, and within the last few years, we've added LTD, long-term disability benefits. We've always felt like it kept the market competitive and helped everybody speak to the fire to give us the best rates. The county provides 100% of the premium for employees for health, life, and the long-term disability. Dependent coverage is offered, but it is at the employee's cost 100%.
And you're saying requesting proposals, going out of the market, the insurance market, rather than potentially getting a renewal of what we have currently? In hopes of getting a better premium?
Right, or at least maintaining close to current. Karnes County has done very well considering the benefits offered on the premiums. Currently, our health insurance premium is $453 a month for employee. Most of our surrounding counties that provide that are $800 to $1,200 a month, with higher than other schools than what we have.
Is there a negative to going, going to do proposals, asking for proposals?
If we do it in this timeline, it shouldn't be because our renewal rates won't be available until mid to late July at the earliest. So if we get this advertisement out, we advertise for two weeks, have the week lag, and then make our due date July 20th or something like that, we should be able to meet.
Are you going to check the tech also this time?
Yes, we send it to all of them.
We've had, we've had, Williams is our first people, and how long have we had them? Four years, three years straight?
We've been with Humana four or five years.
Four, I think. That one year we were with Principal, that would be with Humana for several years, and then went back, three, three, yeah.
We're at a low rate right now, right?
And, of course, that rate's based not only on your population census and your age, but it's also on plan.
That's right. Now, is there, is there a way that we could just renew it, or do we have to go out?
We could just renew, but then we're at the mercy of Humana if they come in with a 200% increase. You know, is the county just going to want to fork out $1,000 per employee for health insurance just because we didn't take the time to do diligence and get proposals?
And just a little FYI on the healthcare reform. In a couple of years, it's called the enrichment deal. If you pay more than $750 for the premium for your employees, you're going to get taxed on that or penalized for that. It won't happen until 2016 or 2017, but your best bet is to go now to start, keep up with the requests for proposals and go out the bids on it, just to make sure we can keep a low rate as long as we can.
Any other discussion? Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Great. Any second, second?
At the same rates, I mean, at the same basis of coverage that we have.
Yes. For apples, Sam. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. 15. Discuss, approve, disapprove, authorizing county officer benefits for RFP for employee benefits for fiscal year 15.
That's just the authorization that I can advertise for the RFPs for the health, life, and the LTD.
Okay. Disapprove. Do we need a motion on that?
Yeah.
All right. All in favor?
All right.
16. Discuss, approve, disapprove, the duties of a human resource department payroll employee benefits, both annual monthly quarterly payroll reports, et cetera, and to whom the department reports, authored by Malana Casper, co-author of the. Wanda, do you have anything to say about that?
During our budget workshops, we've talked about this, as well as an IT resource individual. Before we could even create a department and budget for that department, we need to know what the court wants to create that department and what the duties of that department would be.
The discussions I've had with Malana and I've had with some of the people here in the county were basically that a lot of county governments now. were basically that a lot of county governments now, uh, do employ a human resource department, usually just a human resource director. Some of the real large candidates have multiple people involved in it. They would handle these things. There's, I don't know, you know, we'll, we'll ask commissioners how they feel about it. If there's any ground to it, do we need to have someone do that? Do we need to have an independent department for human resources to set up? Or, I think currently, basically, the county treasurer's office handles the responsibilities. And, uh, commissioners, anybody can comment something?
I kinda think that we're going to the point that we're, we need to have, we need to create a human resource department to make sure our policies are updated and maybe enhanced more than what they are. I know we use, we use tag to do our policies, but yet I think they still need it. In my personal opinion, they need to be more enhanced to, uh, to serve the county's needs as well as the employees' needs. I talked with the H R person out of B County. They just create one who reports directly to the judge. She has two people, one's a payroll clerk. Of course, the auditor was doing the payroll, here's the treasurer does the payroll.
That's because the county doesn't have a treasurer?
Yeah, it doesn't have a treasurer. But, uh, she has a girl that does the payroll, another, another person there that does the, uh, takes care of the workman's comp, all the risk management stuff, is, you know, whatever the county judge there, uh, in the court authorized her to do. Well, I think Wilson County also has gone to an H R person. I've seen on the list, sir, that there are several other counties that are creating now a H R person, and strictly because a lot of the workman's comp claims, and, and it gives the employees someplace to really go and can spend time, or be able to, uh, to, uh, take care of employee issues. Currently, like you say, by, she's tied up pretty much with, with money. I mean, it's just, it's a good thing, I guess, but she's, she's got other stuff on her plate. This would kinda maybe take things off of her plate. It's just my comment. I think there is a need.
Can I?
Yes, fine, fine, more. The risk.
And I, I did make a copy of Judge, like any Judge Butler, uh, H R command, an A G opinion on payroll. Basically, and jumping any time to the lawyer, I'm not. It says that the county commissioners can appoint an appropriate official to do payroll. An H R person is not considered an appropriate official to do payroll, according to the A G opinion. It would have to be, uh, an elected or appointed official on there. Also, part of my duties are all funds that are paid, have to come through my office. They can only be paid through the treasurer's office. So we had an H R person who was another elected official. It's gonna have to come through my office in order for us to verify it and, uh, check it and to make sure it's correct, because I'm not gonna sign anything that I can't verify. So you're basically, in my opinion, not able to take that payroll due away from my office, give to an H R person who is not an appropriate official. We are, as a county treasurer's association, going in front of legislature trying to get, we have a lobbyist too, if we're getting a bill in front of the legislature next year to make payroll part of our core duties, because it's not assigned to anybody. It's just, it's just kinda out there. So, um, in my opinion, I don't think you can take payroll out of my office. As it comes to the, um, reports of payroll, of course, if you put an H R person in there and you're trying to get them to do payroll reports, well, they're not doing payroll reports, so that's gonna have to come back to my office also. Policy manual, that's a hit or miss. We, in the last seven years since I've been here, we've updated the policy manual twice. Again, that's like a legislature deal. Whenever they, uh, amend a policy that affects the employees, then we need to upgrade from that also. And that's where tag comes in and says, okay, your policy manual needs to be updated. The policy manual is written by the department head, it's not written by my office alone. We have a committee, representative from every department comes in. We yea or nay on everything. A lot of the stuff that's in the policy manual is basically what we have to have by law. Shelby wants a policy manual this thing, we won't want about this thing. Because the department heads are the ones that enforce the policy manual. The department heads are the ones in charge of their departments. An H R person is not gonna be in charge of all the departments. They're gonna come in and do new employee packets. Someone who needs to retire or wants to withdraw their funds, well, guess who has to have to do those anyways? My office, who my office is gonna do payroll. Parking comps comes from Lorna's office, that's the way it's just delegated. It's just pointed to the auditor's office. It may at one point been in the treasurer's office, I don't know. And at one point, the auditor's office did the insurance reconciliation, I think, billing, yes.
And rolling in billing.
And rolling in billing, and now it's back into the treasurer's office. In the last two months, I think the sheriff has hired six new employees, right?
Yes, ma'am.
That was probably the biggest influx we had of new employees. I may deal with an employee once a week, maybe. And if I do anything, a lot of times it's current employees that have left and want to withdraw their retirement. It's a form that takes about five minutes to fill out and fax in. I can see there are times that maybe we need an H R person, but I don't think the county dollars need to be spent on the person who is an H R specialist that you're gonna pay a figure sixty thousand dollars a year to not really be busy enough, in my opinion. I appreciate the fact that you would like to lighten my load a little bit, but some of the stuff I do myself, you know, with the policy manual, it's sitting there, and it's sitting there, and I took the ball by the horns, and it's, they did it. Some of the training that we get done, the safety training, everything Suzanne and I have already talked about. Her taking over doing some of those training duties, just because they needed to be done, and so I do it. And that's just my personality. If I see something that needs to be done, I do it. That's just the way I am, so.
And how long, how long have you been in this?
But, well, the treasurer's office has always been in this.
Ever since you've been here?
Yeah, since I've been here since two thousand and seven. I'm not sure when the billing, insurance, and enrollment came into my office, like something Lorna could help with.
Oh, no, two thousand and two.
So authorized, authorized official has to do the payroll, correct?
From what, the A G opinion that I gave you, I'm sorry, intended to get up to you.
So if we decided to go with an H R person, we could have a clerk get your duty at the time, and that clerk, that person could do all the payroll right there, basically, and then y'all do have to audit it, and then you write the check.
And that's what's at your least job is?
Well, who can make the most of it, too, I don't know.
Which A G opinion are you referring to, by?
I'm sorry.
I've got a copy of it here, it's from August nine, two thousand and eleven, A G opinion, given to the Grimes County Auditor. Question there was whether, uh, Grimes County had set up an H R department, an H R director. Question was whether that H R director could perform the function of payroll. And the A G rule that the, it's the attorney general, and there, there is no court, court appealed decision on this, so an A G opinion is, is authoritative from the standpoint there is a court appealed decision that says otherwise. But right now, the A G's opinion would be, they said that because no statute assigns payroll preparation duties to a particular county official, commissioners' court may delegate to them to an appropriate county official. They went out and say that it could be the county auditor, it could be, you know, any, any county official, basically. The statute does not specifically authorize a human resources director to perform a clerical associat-, a clerical function associated with payroll for that, for preparation. But at least one authorized, uh, one statute authorizes county commissioners to assign such duties to a county officer. It does not have to be the treasurer, it does not have to be the auditor, but payroll function, the actual approval and signing of payroll and all that, that has to be done by a county officer, according to this decision. Okay? So that function of a human resource department might be within the scope of the duties of a payroll official, I mean, not payroll, uh, employee official, H R director of the county could not be filled by that H R director at the county. There, there's no prohibition against having, uh, human resource departments. There's, uh, they, that's just one function they could not perform. So that's, that's what I understand. Now, as far as, uh, by whether or not your department is, uh, is, is stretched too thin on this, the only, you know, the only I can ask is that Pete brought up earlier on about the, the audit material that your offices apparently served months late providing.
Right.
Is that, is that something you guys are tied up on, or?
Well, we're working on that, yes, yes.
Do we know when it'll be completed?
It should be next week or so, yes.
And has that just been a time issue, or?
Yes, it was.
What, what's the, what's the, uh, maybe question?
Oh, on the general fund of the two-nine-two account, it's not balancing with the bank statement, it's not balancing with our system, and I'm having to go back to figure out where, it's probably an outstanding check or something that wasn't received in properly. So it just takes a little bit of time to do that. And again, you know, with new employees, if you have an H R person that's gonna take in their packets, and the department heads are the ones that are in charge of hiring the staff. No one else does that, that's gonna be the department, the department head, as of right now. They're gonna have to come to that H R person to fill out the package, and they're gonna have to bring it to us. If we have a question, it's gonna go back to the H R and back to the-
When you say to us, Ted?
To the, our staff for, for payroll issues, if we have payroll.
Payroll.
If we have payroll. And that majority of the information on there has to deal with payroll. The policy manual right now says if you have a problem with your supervisor as an employee, the county judge or the county attorney are the ones that you turn to. Or if you have a problem within your staff or someone in the staff, you go to your supervisor. There are steps to follow on there, and that was something, you know, if we did have an H R person, we could change, but, again, it's a lot of county dollars for someone that's probably gonna use us as a stepping stone, that'll be here to get that experience to go into bigger and better places.
But there are a lot of issues with the payroll?
Oh, there was issues every, every time.
I mean, when your number, you get ready to be turned in, or they, y'all pretty much can just, that's it, and done, or y'all?
It's usually, if there's anything, it's, uh, calculation of comp time on, basically on the sheriff's department, because the, the way they are done at eighty-five and a half for every two, except a forty hour week. It may be someone got a raise, and we didn't round it up to the correct number, or it's little minor things, yes.
Lorna, do you have to audit those numbers?
Yes.
Does that first move a few times?
Yes, I do.
Yes, she does.
I do, and every cycle, A to Z, from the timesheet to the employee benefit allocation, et cetera.
So, but when they come from her, they should pretty much stretch, you should have to go back and look for anything?
Oh, it'd be nice if I could spot on it, not having to do it A to Z.
Again, your H R person is not an appropriate official, so it's, so they don't have to be in my office.
Has, has the court ever assigned the treasurer to do the payroll? I mean, before you ever got here, or?
From day one, I'm just thinking it's always been that way.
I don't know that it's ever been actually with the court, but I know it's always been performed in the treasurer's office. There's a Supreme Court of Texas case, Tyces versus Egan, from nineteen ninety-seven, that overruled A appeals on that. And just briefly, the payroll preparation responsibilities are non-court functions of the county treasurer's office, and the commissioners' court can assign the payroll preparation responsibilities to whomever they deem. Payroll preparation responsibilities and cutting the checks are two different things. Yes, the checks have to be generated through the proper offices that are given those statutory duties, but it's not necessarily that the payroll preparation, H R, benefits or anything else be specific to the treasurer's office based on this.
And that's a ninety-seven, isn't it? We have a two thousand and eleven opinion.
Two thousand and one, the opinion doesn't say it has to be-
Right.
-prior to the-
It has to be an appropriate-
County official.
Official.
So we can move it to the auditor if we want, or to the tax assessor collector, or to the, one of the J P's?
We could move it to an employee if you created an official position. And you could assign it to anybody.
Well, I don't think an official position, it's, it depends on what the world official position needs.
And I know the discussion Judge Butler and I have been, he suggested farming it out to a payroll processing company like A and B P or something like that, which we can't do, because then that precludes the auditing of bill tracks.
My, my opinion on it is, you're doing it, you've been doing it, so far it's fine. And you're willing to keep doing it, why are we gonna go out and spend more money in the county's money when you're willing to do it, and you're already paid by the county? I'd say just keep it, keep it with you. We don't spend any more money, at least this time. If it gets out of hand, and it's coming to the court every month or something like that, then we hold a different meaning. But as of right now, I haven't heard anything much about it until now, so apparently it's been more than fine.
Right. And I, I'm not perfect, my office is not perfect.
Nobody, nobody's perfect.
But, you know.
How many, always we get?
Hundred and one.
No, we pay a hundred and twenty-seven altogether on payroll, and some of them are double paid, because they're in two different departments, and you like, uh, Dr. Saldana is paid in there, so.
I'm talking about employees that, I'm talking about like-
Oh, staff?
Staff, not the outside.
Ninety-two.
Yeah, I read it, less than a hundred.
It was ninety-two.
But then we're hiring, uh, that's-
How many dollars insurance? Pretty close to count.
It's pretty close. We're, we're at the big mark, so that'd be a hundred. But some of your, like, the elected officials were automatic, so it's the ones that have to clock in and out, that's the ones that we have to work with. So that's more of a, of a number there.
All right. What we've done so far in this agenda item is simply discuss duties of human resource department and whom the department reports. Number seventeen was discuss approve this period the creation of human resource department for employee fifteen. It's all been in the same discussion. Does anybody want to make any, what?
So on sixteen, we don't have to have, we don't have to approve anything, because we did discuss the duties.
Pardon me, we just had discussions, no action on sixteen.
Well, seventeen now? It's, uh, discuss approve, disapprove the creation of the human resource department for everyone fifteen. I think it's going fine, and we're doing it fine. I say on that item, we should take no action on it, but it's a two-on-two.
I'd like to ask Herb Hancock, if he wants to make any comment on it. Human resource department, you have a opinion on human resource department?
See, I would recommend one if I had that authority, that would be my recommendation. There's such a need for one right now. I do-
Herb, Herb, you want to, come up here and get a mic, or? Hey, Brian, you, you will come back in in just a second for Herb's finish.
The commissioners' court has a responsibility of creating payroll, of establishing the pay scale. The responsibility of the auditor, sorry, the treasurer, is basically just to pay the bill. The auditor is the one that actually prepares the materials that is given to the commissioners' court. The commissioners' court will prove the bill, and then they go to the treasurer for payroll. There's such a- There's such a demand right now for a human resource person to take care of, uh, the job descriptions, once those are put in the standards, it's going to be a lot more difficult than it is now to make sure that the employees that are working comply with the job descriptions. There are just a number of things. My suggestion would be, uh, the treasurer has made a recommendation and commissioners have approved the establishment of a HR firm to do a study. And a request would be to ask that study group whether or not there is a need for an HR person in this county. But my recommendation would be the creation of a human resource department at this time. That's under the control of the commissioner's court and the county chairman.
Perhaps what we have here is just, uh, let's look this survey we're making, take its course, and, uh, I can consult with them, any other commissioner's court we can consult with them as, as they kind of analyze or account each one situation, and as well as the pay raises or whatever have to pay. And, uh, and we'll see what information we get, we can discuss.
The, you've got an HR department that is being created for the purpose of doing a study with the county. There's a lot of responsibilities other than just paying.
Oh, I realize that, yeah.
And they are going to be in a better position to make a recommendation to the commissioner's court as to whether or not there's a need for a human resource person than we are in discussing just in generalized terms what is needed in the county, and that is the reason for my recommendation.
True.
Again, the department heads are in charge of their own departments. Uh, yes, job descriptions are probably needed, but that human resource person is not going to be in charge of anybody's department but their own department. They're not going to be able to come in and fire or hire somebody. That's going to be the department head's, uh, position, that's how it's, basically, yes, we are a county, we're not a big company, we're a county, but each department head's in charge of their own department. Basically, the only thing commissioners are in charge of of anybody's department is our budget. They have no say-so over our departments, that's what our statutes are for.
The, the response to that is basically this, the commissioners are asking an elected official to administer the functions of a body. And if we get the elected official who has a personal agenda, then we have to deal with that through the back door, and that is a big problem or one of the problems that we've had in the past. It's getting better, but there are still some problems with individuals trying to manage other offices through the back door, and this is the reason there's a need for a human, serve, human resource department, not to try to tell the individual heads of the departments what to do, but to assist the individual heads in doing a better job.
Any other comments on, we have some kind of officers and employees, or anybody have any comments on what we just heard?
Yes, sir, I would agree with Mr. Hancock and with, uh, Mr. Esprit, that if you say that we've always done it this way, it's been going good because of people we've been up until now, you know, we're still looking back and just looking forward, this county is not going to get smaller in the number of employees that we have, and this county is not going to get smaller. Human resources officer does not only hire or doesn't fire anybody, that has always been, even in government services, a department head's responsibility. And human resources does establish a standard job description as long as, as well as a lot of other things within their sphere of influence. Human resources has become a very, very complex, uh, career field, which includes EO, federal and state regulations we have to follow, as well as county, county requirements. We need somebody who's, who's got an education and experience to help this county go into the future and not, you know, the way we've always done it. And if we, who the, who the force to, the human resources officer, in my view, was working directly to the county judge, uh, if it came to payroll person, if you don't have a treasurer that beat county, Marin County, and several other counties, and if they do in federal service, the payroll is actually under the responsibility of the control. Uh, and that, it would have been responsible in your case, in our case, it would be responsible to the county judge and the commissioner's court. But I think that the recommendation for both a human resources officer and for IT person should be well considered by the commissioner's court. On the IT side, I would suspect based on just what little I know of the operations that are ongoing in the county, I would guess we could probably pay somewhere north of seventy-five thousand dollars for, uh, computer and software requirements, having people come in to install. You know, we would actually be better off to have a full-time IT person who had called, rather than have to find somebody, get an appointment, call somebody from outside, and they get here when they get here. But I think it would be well worth our time and more cost effective, especially in the long term, because the human resources officer, one of their primary responsibilities is to limit liability exposure of the organization for whom they work, and make sure that we're in compliance with federal, state law, and the, the human resources.
Thank you. All right. Do we have a motion to create the human resource department for FY fifteen?
I like the suggestion.
Yes.
While we need a HR department, our first step with a treasurer, do this job, you'll need to consider facilities to take, just before you start approving a bunch of places, we have no place to put anybody in this county, other offices, well, just want to try to consider that, considering these, these departments. I mean, we were already, basically, county attorneys live in, head office of the break room, so before you start approving a whole bunch of places, consider facilities.
There'll be someone in county jail in a special.
Really? Enough to what I heard.
That's true. Just consider it, just, just consider it.
I guess, well, Sheriff, Sheriff, will you guys be leaving this office?
Yes, sir, we will. One for this guy.
We need to take it.
We got, we got a break present out.
I do feel like we could use human resources.
Well, do you, do you want to make a motion, or do you want me to wait and see?
Okay, I, as you, as you suggested, wait and see what could come up with this human resource.
All right.
So if we just wait on it for a month or so, make a decision.
Yeah, we're, we're not going to be, uh, sometime during the time we figure out our budget, uh, we would have to make a decision.
I agree, I think you should wait and see what HR, the group that does this survey, what they would recommend into area, maybe they'll offer something, I don't know.
Next, number eighteen is to discuss, approve, or disprove, uh, information technology services for fifty, fifty year fifteen. We want to, uh, and then nineteen is supposed, discuss, approve, disprove the creation of an information technology IT department for FY fifteen. Uh, these both offered by Juan and me. Uh, we have, as I have received input from various county employees and officers, uh, about the IT department, whether or not we should have an ID director to, it would be, you know, overseeing all of the county's, uh, computer issues, basically, to make sure we, uh, we have a, perhaps a more homogeneous mix of, of, uh, hardware and software, something that can be understood and serviced perhaps easier, more efficiently. Uh, I think that's something that, uh, would be strange, are coming out of the mechanic corps office and the district corps office, we're both going to be having to go to, you know, payroll, the filing, things of that nature, going to be, there are going to be some headaches and hangups along the way, I'm sure there, and then I've just heard some people that there seems to be a kind of mix, uh, in the, in the computing systems of the county. Anybody have any other input in that?
I agree, I think that, uh.
Oh, by the way, I've surveyed around, checked around and see what, whatever problem it takes to get a competent IT person to come here, and, uh, we're probably looking at a salary of somewhere between sixty and eighty thousand dollars, get somebody who really knows.
I asked to knock out the same. What are we paying for outside IT support?
Juan would be the best source of that.
From October first through May thirty-first, for labor or services, we've paid right at sixty-seven thousand dollars.
And, uh, keep in mind that you can have a very good IT person, and they're not going to be able to address every issue that comes up, they're going to have to, uh, you know, hire outside contractors, we're not going to faithfully eliminate outside contract expense, uh, materials, things of that nature. Uh, I think the advantage you would gain to have someone who has knowledge of all the systems and, and hopefully as new systems are put in place or as updates are made, they could make it for it's a little more uniform, a little more user-friendly and service-friendly design.
I'd say this, that, that's the biggest problem I found right now, it's all un-uniformed. It's just we've got a mixed, this big mess of different systems operating, it makes it tougher even outside IT guy, Tommy, says the one we've been using as a contractor to even fix anything. And, uh, I mean, we're looking at trying to upgrade systems right now, product, even this building is way beyond worship.
I've talked with the commissioner's in Wilson County, they have one that's right now, and he's, and he saves them a lot of money, so, boy, he takes care of their system security, uh, from their phone systems to the PA system, to the, to the copy machine. Nothing, nothing, uh, is bought unless it goes through him and then he, he reviews the need and, uh, and, and so it's all uniform with everything else. You know, our, our IT system, here, here, everybody's got a, I guess, their own little wireless, uh, that they have, the, the routers, instead of maybe having a county-wide org system, period.
Not anymore.
Well, I know, but, but what I'm saying is, you've got a different system over there than they have over here.
Yes, multiple systems.
Yeah, and so.
Multiple systems within a building.
Yeah, and we could, you know, but I, I'm in favor of IT because we need to get to the twenty-first of June.
All right. Do you, do you have a motion?
I'm making a motion, we've approved the creation of an IT department.
All right. All in favor?
I am.
Tax collectors report.
Month to date, seventeen thousand, seven thirty-two, sixteen. Year to date, nine million, four seventy-seven, five eighty-seven, oh five, a collection rate of ninety-six point nine nine percent. That was on the, on the current taxes. Over the liquid taxes, three thousand, nine dollars and sixty-four cents. That's month to date. Year to date, fifty-three thousand, nine oh four forty for a collection rate of twenty-seven point eighty-three percent. Anderson sinking for the county, month of May, two thousand, fourteen dollars and forty-nine cents. Year to date, one million, two hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety-two cents for a collection rate of ninety-seven point oh nine percent. Delinquent INS for the month of May, a hundred and sixteen dollars and forty-six cents. Year to date, two thousand, two ninety-six, eighty-seven for a collection rate of twenty-point two seven percent. Roden Bridge for the month of May, three thousand, eighty-seven, sixty-one. Year to date, two million, one hundred and sixty-four thousand, one hundred and nine dollars and sixty-four cents for a collection rate of ninety-seven point oh three percent. Delinquent taxes for Roden Bridge in the month of May, seven oh nine, forty-two. Year to date, uh, three thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seventy-four, excuse me, twelve thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars and eighty-eight cents for a collection rate of thirty-seven point four percent. Roll fire, uh, month of May, uh, current taxes, one thousand, nine hundred and nineteen dollars and thirty-four cents. Year to date, one million, forty-five dollars, excuse me, one million, forty-five thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars and sixteen cents for a collection rate of ninety-seven percent. Delinquent taxes, uh, roll fire, month of May, three hundred and fifty dollars and sixty-nine cents. Year to date, one thousand, six forty-three, sixty-four for a collection rate of thirty-eight point five one percent.
I have a question, Ryan, it's, 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 the, 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 the , it says, why do we have different collection rates for each entities, like, every, senior?
I honestly don't know the, the answer to that, it's just, it, the computer generates that, I don't, I mean, they're very close.
It's going to have to do with your supplements, isn't it?
Yeah, probably so.
As you do.
Like, supplements, like changes in division orders for the oil wells and stuff, things, some, it will affect some entities and not other entities, and, um, is that what you're referring to, Juan?
Well, my question was going to be, like, on your supplements that are adjustments, wouldn't they be the same for our general fund, our interest in sinking, our road special? Because, and roll fire too, because any adjustments that are made are going to affect all our tax bases that may not affect the same.
The collection rates, you mean?
Well, your supplements, like, on the front page on the M and O, the plus supplements was six hundred and sixteen dollars and nine cents, about midway down the page. But then on Roden Bridge Special, the plus supplements are one forty-nine eighty-one. And if you look at just regular INS, look at your plus supplements are twenty-two dollars and sixty-six cents.
I would have to say, well, I didn't go off the top of my head.
Well, I wasn't going to ask it here, I was going to ask it later, but since Judge Butler started it, I was just.
I'm just.
And I'm sure that depends on how much is collected into those.
Now, I assume, when, when I get my tax bill, it doesn't, I just get a tax bill, I don't get a tax bill for sinking entries, I don't get a tax bill for Roden Bridge, I just get a tax bill, all right? And I pay it, I don't pay it, whatever they get in there, and, uh, so, I would assume the money that I pay is allocated based on.
On the rates.
On the rates, I just don't understand how it ends up with different percentages collected on each of these things, since, I can't send you any checks now, I'm not going to pay sinking, but I'm going to pay Roden Bridge and operations.
I do not think it's different, but I, they're very close.
The, the biggest difference is all is. The, the biggest difference is always, like, the delinquent collection rates, uh, percentages on, I guess it's sinking and everything else. Twenty-five, twenty-seven, thirty, thirty's gonna be forty.
I'll be checking.
Just curious, I'm sure there's...
I don't know today, but I'll be checking.
I don't know what it is. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, Craig's report?
Should have a copy of it in there. Also, with the correction on the outside investments for general, the auditor brought to my attention late Friday afternoon that there was a difference and we came in Saturday morning to figure out what that difference was. We brought some money in to pay some sinking bills and I'm not sure what happened, but we didn't put into the system correctly, so we're, we will be breaking back this week. And then extra supplemental issue. So...
Is everything in black that gets the correction?
Well, the bold print is the difference that was in there and we went back until we paid those bills and that's what the difference is. And so we're gonna correct it this week in the system. And you can see on one of them, we moved some money from one fund to the other because of the higher interest rate. On the jail bond and on the Roden Bridge Special.
How often do you move the money? Once a month?
Well, we moved quite a lot back in the general fund this past month because we had, uh, we were just kinda letting the county sales tax and the tax collection pay for the bills and we kind of, on our, in our system, we were overdrawn, so under about two point eight million back into the general fund last month. And, uh, interested sinking, we'll be moving some money out, I think, next month in July and August, we have some bills that'll be coming up, so we'll move some money out of there from that. But we don't move back in very often, we'll out, we try to move it out more.
Are you giving the advisory to the county management?
Yes, his name is Bob Ross. Yes, his name is Bob Ross with fund management. I work with him. Uh, he's the one who does the FICA and the DWS scutter ones. The Texas class is Bill Morwitz. He's also a investor that we use. I have a couple of people wanting us to start doing agency bonds, buy bonds on those. The bills are for two to five years on some of those and we really, we're still kinda iffy with the interest rates as anybody says, I'm like, they're gonna be... I have a company that I'm kinda working with right now that will do like a ladder investment. We'll do like a million for six months and maybe two hundred thousand for like two years if there's a higher rate interest rate, but when that one billion comes in, roll it over into a different higher rate, which we are working with.
Did we ever revise the, our, our current financial plan? We had, when I first came on the court, we had a guy who was, was up there, had like five or six-page financial plan or something we had, a canvas following...
I think the auditor and...
Do we ever, we need to...
Right.
Do we have that reviewed and updated so we're know what we're doing?
Are you referring to the financial plan or are you referring to the investment policy?
No, I guess we had a financial plan.
Bob Ross and Dusty Trailer, RBC, had come in and done one at the time we were proposing, requesting the voters to authorize bonds for the courthouse and the jail and the roads.
That's what the, yeah, case was. But I still think, Manny, do we need to, to contact somebody and really do what we're doing? So I know you've got, your, your policy, I understand that, but I'm just saying, I just look at from the outside to see exactly what we're doing. And, I mean, we, how we need to do things for the next four or five years?
Well, that was something that Bob Ross, when we had investment policy meeting, our investment committee meeting, and Pete was there also, he had said something about, uh, long-term planning for the county. Then you knew if you had ten million dollars, that you're not gonna need to touch for two years. You could put in something that's a higher interest rate for two years, but unless the county has the type of financial plan and what they want to do, long-range plan, it's not important to invest long-term. Again, you know, every committee, uh, conference I go to, well, what's the interest rate gonna be, what's the planning gonna be, and y'all probably have to, last week, and one probably has hers off, so it's a flip of the coin in what the interest rate's gonna be.
I guess it's where I'm going to is that maybe the court as a whole, we need to sit down and decide for the future. I mean, look at what we wanna, what we, what we envision, or what do these department heads vision for the next five years coming down the road? It's part of the, gotta be part of the budgeting process. That's just my view.
The commissioners need to decide what they're gonna do with that building next door because you're not gonna get funding for the state eventually, in my personal opinion. It's not gonna happen. We've seen it dwindle to a little bit of nothing last couple of years and you either bite the bullet or...
That's one of the, that's one of the topics that we...
So, I know that's a part of our...
That's concerned, but, uh, but I, you know, I think that we need to really sit down and have a financial...
That's what you wanna do.
We need to have a financial plan as for proposed projects for the future, just to be thinking.
Yeah, you gotta work on your roads. You gotta work on your roads. Please. I mean, that's something that's...
Well, and even before you have Bob Henderson or Dusty or whomever come in to discuss financial planning, the court as a whole needs to figure out what its goals are for five or ten years. Then a financial planner can tell you, okay, take this amount of money and put it here, hold this in your liquidity account.
But it's also gonna struggle with the department heads coming to us and telling us, this is what we proceed for the next five to ten years. Because, as has just been said, we can't tell you departments how to run, we just have to budget it. But you need to come to us and tell us, I think my department in five years is gonna be here, or my department in ten years may be here, even though I'm not gonna be, I may not be here at the time, but this is my vision for my, my department.
Chief, if you can do that, you issue the budget guidance from the commissioner's court to make that part of the budget process. That they, that each department provide us one and a five-year plan and whatever you decide for the future plan.
All right. Can we ask on the treasurer's report whether we made motion approved?
We approve the check. And present with the amendments.
All right. One in favor?
And that's what we're gonna be assigning for. My signature on it. There are questions, the commissioners need to sign that second page.
I'm gonna have a copy of your proposal, say, Eric.
Does he have the signed copy of my report? Okay, commissioners need, there's a page they need to sign also. Thank you.
Hello? Okay, the bill's cycle out of ordinary expenditures, uh, if you look off page four, chief advisor, the way down under section five hundred, we got the lot leg, we got nominal expenses on the jail and courthouse this cycle. Page one A of the courthouse are five hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifty cents and the jail is a hundred and ninety-eight dollars. So that tells we look out at the end of the month. You go to page six, under the sheriff's department, midway down, you will see, starting with Dallas Dodge Chrysler Jeep, twenty-three thousand nine hundred and twenty. At the end of that department is vehicles and cop seat equipment for the six new physicians that have been authorized. The total cost there is two hundred and twenty thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. Go to page eleven, which is Roden Bridge. Total bond money spent for this cycle is a hundred and thirty-four thousand three hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty-nine cents. The totals for this cycle is four hundred and ninety-six thousand six hundred and seventy-six
Now, one of the tower technologies for your office, that's, that you can, the system is coming in life?
That is our current maintenance system on our current April term system. We have to have continued support on that until they start the new systems.
When will that be?
They will start being on-site August eleventh and they expect the go-live conversions to be in November. We will be operating in both systems on those cycles. And that's maintenance and support in both my office and the treasurer's office.
But it'll be led by the tax office, is that so?
Tax office is separate now, they are with B and A, Richard Madden.
This is tower technology.
Under the tax office?
Uh-huh. Page four.
Brenda, are you still under theirs?
We'll pay, you pay through June. Through June.
We have, uh, two hotspots for our...
Okay.
Shelby, they're under our plan, but we're switching, we're, we're making a switch to ATT.
That was, I was kinda wondering about that.
The equipment should be here this week, so we're making a switch from Verizon to ATT.
Both?
Yeah.
Same phone, sure?
Yeah, the CMS, Sheriff's, Special Project, everybody's on the same phone now.
And it'll be the same phone if, if they're not gonna change phones.
So we weren't under contract with Verizon?
No, I think in, not in another few days, soon as that equipment hits.
It's just the one here.
They have, the state allowed us to get on the state contract, so we're gonna have a better pricing in the state and better service.
Report of fines, fees, monies collected by the bond departments, county clerk?
For the month of May, our office paid sixty-nine thousand four hundred and sixty dollars.
Any friends? Got your restitution for the bond, May nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars. May district clerk, I missed it.
Yes. You skipped me. Okay, for, um, May, so, um, the total was six thousand eight hundred and sixty-six. Several totals, eight thousand two hundred and the grand total is sixty-six. Less, less checks dispersed was three thousand eight hundred and eighteen sixty-two for a total of eleven thousand two hundred and forty-seven thirty-eight. We also received a number of, um, of four hundred and eight dollars on May nineteenth for, um, jury re- reimbursement, um, from January fourteenth to March fourteenth. Um, I would like to comment to Commissioner's court, and, uh, thank you for December nineteenth, um, for the creation and approving, you know, IT guy. I think that, um, I did speak for myself and the county's office also, I think it's gonna be very beneficial for our office, knowing locally kind of approaching us. Um, you mentioned about, uh, what each department has, uh, wants to share with you, whatever what your words were, uh, inside or what you feel is approaching. Um, I'd like to share it with you, all of you, just the things that I have. Um, one would be preserving the records as the district clerk. One of my main duties is to preserve the district clerk residence. Um, so that is something that I'm sovereignty on, you know, all the trifle cases, that is what I am looking to, and want to be preserving, maintenance of records that have never been taken before. Um, so that is something that I will approach in the long future. Two, um, following the retention schedule program, the district clerk's office, I know if anyone can correct me, it has never been followed. So, um, someone had, uh, shared, that was ideas with me and he mentioned that the, the district clerk's office is becoming a storage and, and I had not really seen it that way and, and it has become a storage. Um, nothing has been, um...
Or...
Right, you know, and, and retention schedule has never been followed and it's something that I have looking into and I want to do and it's also something that I will be requesting, um, this budget year. We can get rid of this, some of this, and I know other departments have started and that is also something that I'm looking into and want to do. Um, and then again, two thousand sixteen, what's approaching us is the E-filing and, um, yeah, you know, so there's, on my part, there's three different things, preserving of the records, following the retention schedule, and then of course, we have to do that, two thousand sixteen, that E-filing. Um, also, going, if I do go back, the district clerk's office goes back to the courthouse. It wouldn't be able to happen without what we have, that's, that's space-wise, not new things.
Does this do your document retention requirement?
Yes, sir, yes. I believe so.
You just get too many paperwork, maybe?
Yes, sir.
Has there been a, have you looked at getting that stuff digitally recorded?
We do now, we do now, but we still do...
I mean, the past, or whatever you... Whatever you.
Yes, I am looking into that, yes, yeah. Preserving, um, having, having it digitalized, right, where we can have it and provide copies if needed to the locals or, you know, the rent people or whatever.
And now I know there are things you can get rid of.
Yes, sir, yes.
I frequently, practicing in general, would notice from courts, the cases that are finished, saying, you know, we have all these definitions of this and that, in your file, we're going to destroy it unless you want it. Just want to get an opinion, we'll do that.
Right.
So you can get rid of a lot of stuff that you can.
I know the county court has begun, if you're a criminal, for something I don't want to bother you, you need to. You're running out of space even here.
Right.
So Denise, are you wanting to do like a mass shredding like we've done in the past?
Yes, and, and that is something that I've discussed also with Levana and Judge Feller about, you know, that's one of my requests, that I will need that for next budget taking, and I don't know how, you know, that would, it's something that.
We just called, vanishing documents, and we told them we had four hundred banker-sized boxes, and they gave us a quote. And they came in one day and they just started shredding for the crap.
Well, probably every department needs to look at all their records that they have. I know you're the retention officer, but, but still, every department needs to do their own.
Yeah, everybody follows their own retention schedule. But, yeah, we can probably check with the other departments and see if they have a bunch of stuff that needs to be shredded and get it done again.
But the problem with, with that right now is that the stuff that's in the special, the old Special Projects building, is from years and years and years ago, so that department head may not be here anymore, and there may be a new official who doesn't know that all of that is over there, so all of that is, is the problem we have in addition to what we have currently.
And if it's in between Sergeant Hoots and nineteen fifty-one, he can't.
Jeff, we're going to do a record, records retention policy, starting with the county attorney's office. That has been written, obviously.
We have a, a record retention policy in the county that was adopted in like nineteen ninety-four. Basically, it states that each department head is their own records retention officer.
This is an update policy that is associated with the county attorney's office, nobody else's. So it's a policy that has the ability to locate those records that are across the street, and whether or not we can retain those records in a computer system, or we have hard copies. Those kind of policies are what we only have, or my department, not anybody else.
Okay, Denise, we had, you did say it's impossible for you to go back to the courthouse?
I think so, yes.
We had discussed that earlier, with our plans for the courthouse, the preliminary policy.
Together.
That'd be my thing for six minutes.
Yeah, the justice. You speak for all officers, Chief, Chief Judge.
The Jex Court's Office, J. number one. New cases filed in her court was three hundred and thirty-seven. Total retained by the county, twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven sixty-one. Total remitted to the state, thirteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six seventy-nine. Total revenue collected, forty-one thousand, one thirty-four forty. For Judge, uh, Kuzetka, J. number two. New cases filed in her court, ninety-nine. Total retained by the county, sixteen thousand, seven thirty-two sixty-four. Total remitted to the state, fourteen thousand, one forty-six point six. Total revenue collected, thirty thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight ninety. For my office, J. number three. New case is filed, one hundred and eighty-three. Total retained by the county, twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four thirty-six. Total remitted to the state, nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-three thirty-four. Total revenue collected, thirty-one thousand, one hundred and seventeen seventy. For Judge Feller, precinct four. New case is filed, ninety-six. Total retained by the county, ten thousand, two hundred and seven point eight. Total remitted to the state, five thousand, fifteen ninety-six. And total collected, fifteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-three twenty-four.
Questions, gentlemen?
Hey, I guess, this is not triggered one minute. Where says county ordinance on your top of your, your page, what is, you're talking to my board?
What is on page two?
Yeah. Where says like traffic, amusement, he had county ordinance, and those are speeding or what is that?
No, that would be in, um, the county, if the county had the ordinance, that would, that's what that would be. Um, the traffic would be where you can see parking, non-parking, um, that's what that would be.
So would an ordinance be similar to if someone violated the department?
Yes.
Something like that?
Yes, that's what that would be.
Thank you. June on the phone? If we have a important subject to discuss. Special Projects.
For my determination permit, we had a hundred and twenty-two permits, for a total of seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-five. For our engineer, we paid out three thousand, four hundred, and the county's portion was three thousand, one hundred and twenty-five. For second permit, we had ten permits, a total of four thousand, one hundred, and the county's portion was two thousand, four hundred and eighty.
On the flood line, we were talking the other day, and you said there's a lot of oil sites that mainly have been built, got written on the plane, but yet have no type of.
No engineering studies.
Engineering studies.
Yes.
So.
Right now, our only problem was Conoco, they finally come around, and we have started permitting of all the other oil companies or company and new studies. So Conoco and Fennell, that wasn't.
Have you, have any, have tier twos are still coming in, or they're all been submitted?
Uh, they pretty much all been submitted, and I haven't found anything.
Thanks.
Good morning, I just wanted to give you all my monthly report for calls, citations, and warnings for the month of May. Accidents, we had a total of fifteen, briefs. Agency assists, we had a total of three. Alarms, we had sixteen arrests, we had seventy-seven assaults, we had two criminal mischief, we had total of four disturbances, nine. Assist EMS and fire twenty-two, funeral escorts one, loose livestock's twenty, prisoner transports forty-two, reckless drivers, we had eight. Quests sticked off with a hundred and four, road hazards thirty-two, suspicious activity twenty-six, uh, death slash burglaries nineteen, traffic stops three hundred and ninety-one, warnings a hundred and sixty-eight, citations two hundred and twenty-three. And on the back page, it's a total of our daily, uh, jail records.
Going.
Yes, sir.
I was just a concern, I think you probably see more of, kind of get more people on the street. When you had a bailout yesterday, that created a big issue, you know?
Yes, sir.
And we needed, I mean, is it something we have to look at for the future? I don't know how y'all did it, or what y'all did, but, you know, a lot of them were kids, is that correct?
Some of them were juveniles, we had some that were juveniles, uh, on the bailout, and the thing is, we usually call ICE, uh, when we detain them. First, we're having problems is, when I called to let them know how many we had custody of, you know, just going to give them an update, we were told that they would get back with us, because they didn't know if they would come get them from us. Which from before, usually call, and they're like, okay, we'll be there in an hour, forty-five minutes. Well, I probably called nine, a total of twelve different people, before I finally got a, 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 give me two hours or three hours before we can get them, if not, we'll call you back, but, uh.
Where'd you detain them all?
We, we, we detained, we detained them at the jail.
Even the juveniles?
Well, the juveniles were held in the back offices, we can't, but that's where we detained them.
That was my question. That was my question, is if you continue to have bigger, or same amount, how are we going to detain some of these people? To, or how do you plan to do that?
Yeah, we had to take several to the hospital also, so that's, uh, we're going to have a lot of that.
Why note the arrests, how many were actually put in the jail?
Uh, we, we brought in during the day, we were at number twenty-seven, and then later on, we, uh, probably about five in the evening, we picked up another three, and then later on at night, about ten o'clock at night, we, uh, we had like another nine that we detained, and they came from like four, five o'clock in the morning.
So, I guess what I'm saying is, we need to maybe be thinking about more if we, because this is not, this is going to happen. Same thing, I think, with EMS, you have the same issue.
There's some health issues involved, there are also bringing in court, some of these people are spitting up blood, all kinds of stuff like that, so created a hazard for not only our employees, but EMS also, so we had to kind of separate things out. So, we managed it, but a lot of these people hadn't eaten and drank in three days, so that's why they had to be taken to the hospital. But it did create a hazard situation for the county office, that's how I know.
Does I just pay for that, the hospital care?
We don't know as of yet, so, um, but that's something we'll have to deal with once the bill comes in, but, but anyway, it did create a hazard for our people as well as, as EMS's people.
On something like that, sometimes I'll have to deal with the administrator at our office, and sometimes they'll use their, they have monies and engine funds, and sometimes they'll cover some of the.
I know they've always been so strict as if they were a county, and it's a, I think sleeping's are not.
We went to, we went to the store and purchased water, and had to take it out there and give to these people, so we went in and did all of that stuff, and make sure the hydrated, but a lot of the young children, like I picked up two of them that were eleven years of age, and they were coming to us, I mean, once they initially ran, they were so dehydrated, they were coming to us. They're looking for help, so.
When we were down, last week, that was a big issue down there that they were having in their camp. The, 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 Homeland Security would catch all these people and take them to the bus station, the bus station, because they take a lot, you know, here's, here's some stuff here before a certain date, and these people had no water, they had no clothes, and they have people that are trying to take care of these people, and, and, uh, it's going to get worse, I think, here.
There are several agencies working behind the scenes on this problem, so, anyway, they're trying to work on behind the scenes, see who's responsible for this, so they can file some criminal charges.
I wish we could use G O's, the, you know, the other facility there, being worked out, such with them, when we catch these guys that hold them, delay.
I just don't think you can put juveniles out there.
Yeah, I know that, I know, I understand that, but, um, it's just a liability on the county, holding all these people, but just sure we can find out what we're going to do with them, is my concern.
In the new facility, will y'all have ample space to hold the juveniles separate?
And juvenile, well, you see, and we'll have for the adults, but now juveniles probably will hold them like, you know, in the office, like holding.
We got the seven court juvenile.
Yeah, seven. But now, we just, we have them, they designated where the district judge, that's the judge's office, where we have a juvenile that comes in, that's where we sit with them.
Well, that's one of the reasons why when y'all approved and gave us those extra traffic slots, we had extra people out that day, and it worked out good, so we pulled the traffic people off, put them with the patrol and with investigations. That's what gave us eight or ten units. That's why we were so successful in catching twenty or twenty-five out off the pack, because we surrounded that area, and it helped us. So, anyway, we appreciate the court giving us those extra positions, going to sure pay off.
Had y'all transport in school buses or something?
We used the van.
The jail van.
Jail van.
The blue van.
That blue van, that's what we got.
So, we appreciate the court giving us that extra help, so.
And just a little update also on the last six deputies, also, we, three started today, and, uh, we're in the process of getting the next three to interview. But today, we have three to start.
Is anybody looking at how the state's handling this issue? I mean, I know this is an issue that the federal government seems to be just crushing off, but has the state made any type of statement on this issue? Because I know Arizona is having a big problem with it, they, they're, they're starting to take a lot of these people from their military bases. Port Seals had them, Lackland's had them, Arizona has flooded with the problems, so I'm just wondering if the state of Texas has made a statement or have you reached out?
Yeah, well, I know, uh, Lackland has quite a few, because I got calls.
A lot.
That a lot from them, that they had, that some of the manpower was there watching them there, that's why they couldn't send us help.
The federal response on it is that they're not planning on sending them back, they can't send them back, because they cannot release them, unless they're just to a guardian or a parent. So it's going to be a problem until you can find a solution, and how the state was addressing it.
And I should be having Mr. De La Garza, my agent from the Civil Detention Center, he should be giving me a call today, because I called him last week, and we had some concerns, and he was going to get back with some answers.
Just to make sure. I'm going with Ford and Road and Bridge. Correct. We don't have anything to say, except reports, and what we have done, and complaints, everything is such that, I've got any questions on? I have a couple more, thank you, since it's called. We have probably above fifteen to twenty roads washed out for last rains. And we finally got a fix, and then we got round two, and it's on the line, but we're back out there. Anyway, people know it's. Thanks, Mike. Thank you. Go on. We had a report, I guess.
Okay, by a word of you when she gave her report, I doubt that we struck the same number of totals shown by the outside investments and what are actually reflected in the system. She has identified the problem and will be proceeding or moving monies as are applicable. You'll go to my page, which is titled Orange County Items of Interest. County cash and checking accounts and whole city national bank, not invested, one million, three hundred and eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six. County cash in checking accounts at All City National Bank, non-invested one million, three hundred eighty-two thousand, nine hundred thirty-one dollars and fourteen cents. County cash invested at All City National Bank is a negative eighty-eight sixty. There were some receipts entered in reverse in the system, so therefore that negative is shown. Those adjustments have been identified last week and will be reflected in the June activity.
What do you mean in reverse?
Instead of receiving it as interest revenue, it was received in the cash line item twice, so therefore it indicates a negative. County cash invested in outside investments, thirty-six million, four hundred twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty-three cents. Total county cash, thirty-seven million, eight hundred ten thousand, one hundred four dollars and seven cents. Sales tax received in May twenty-fourteen, eight hundred thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred thirty-one dollars and four cents. Sales tax received in the same period in two thousand thirteen, seven hundred sixty-two thousand, two hundred twenty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents. That's approximately a nine point nine one percent increase of seventy-five thousand, five hundred three dollars and eighty-three cents. If you remember, the last two or three months, it was a decrease, so still much away. The county attorney hot check clerk reimbursement from fiscal year twenty-thirteen was paid in full May twenty-eighth, two thousand fourteen, an amount of eight hundred fifty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. We still have not received our legal fee reimbursement from energy transfer from the tax evasion that they requested, that's being court denied, five thousand, six hundred six dollars and twenty-four cents. And the reimbursement from the Texas Historical Commission submitted on March thirty-first has not been received yet, ninety-four thousand, five hundred thirty-nine dollars and fifty-three cents. Judge Butler and I have begun, begun working on the budget. Uh, we are going through each department's request, and there are several departments that have not turned in requests yet. I need them.
I'm waiting on... I'm waiting on my furniture quote.
Veteran's Service, justices of the peace, one and two, tax collector, constables, two, three, and four, sheriff's department, highway patrol, DPS, commissioners, two and four, and the treasurer's office.
Unless you want me to take my salary, it's pretty, I'm going to take it half.
Actually, we're doing all the preliminary work, preliminary work is done, then it'll be presented to court. I, I'm trying to, gradually bringing Judge Butler into this and showing how things have been done in the past and educating on different things that come from different departments, which would be very mundane and boring to the rest of the court, so we're gonna try and make them short and sweet.
Thank you. Eight minutes, John.
Yes, sir. Pretty short and sweet, several months. Uh, one thing on there, about halfway down that paper, we're gonna see the October through April. Um, that was a typo, I didn't change that from the last one. I use the same form, that should actually be, uh, October through April of twenty-fourteen, or twenty, should be October through May, twenty thirteen, and October through May, twenty fourteen, on those calls. Uh, had a hundred and twenty-seven dispatch requests, treated a hundred and thirty-three patients, had three multi-patient incidents, uh, transported seventy-three, uh, patients, that's either to the ER or to a landing zone for helicopter evacuation, we had six of those. Uh, we actually, something you don't see here, we had probably another four or five of those that, uh, where we were denied because the helicopter couldn't fly due to weather, uh, or some other related event. Um, did one out of county transport, I believe that was to Wilson County. Patient refusals for transport, we had forty-eight of those. We did a total of four fire standbys, one of those was Superior Trucking Fire, which tied up both of our units on that. Multi-unit calls, and you'll notice that's the same as the multi-patient incidents, is that's three, uh, took both units to handle those scenes. Uh, and calls made by the backup unit or the unit that's on standby, uh, was twenty. October twenty-twelve through May twenty-thirteen, uh, we had done a total of seven hundred fifty-four calls. That same date range of twenty thirteen to twenty-fourteen, we've done a thousand and sixteen calls, or a difference of two hundred and sixty-two more calls this past year than the year prior. That number seems to be holding pretty steady every month. Uh, monies collected, fourteen thousand, one hundred forty-eight dollars and seventy-four cents from Medicare, twelve thousand, seven hundred sixty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents from other insurances.
Do you guys submit your own bills, or do you have a bill collection agency?
We, we, uh, we package them up, and when I say package, I, I verify the information that's on the, uh, run forms, uh, and any patient documentation that we've received, uh, and I electronically submit that to our billing company, A R Management. They do the billing, the bills come to, the checks come to us, we notify them with how much we collected. Um, the Medicare money is direct positive, uh, so we get an explanation for benefits on that, uh, and they can do the collections for us on the, on the back end.
Dennis Vasquez, we, uh, we approved the purchase of another unit, can you give a very big report on what's going on?
The, uh, the new unit is ordered, we want, we should have it October first, that is the date. The original date that they had given me, uh, was mid-December. Uh, we told them that, you know, this, this unit was one that we needed now. Explained our circumstances, they were highly gracious enough to work with us, move it up to the front of the line, and, uh, hope to have us out, uh, first of October at the latest, could be a couple of weeks earlier. Uh, and we're right now in the process of ordering some equipment and some supplies. One of the problems we have is more or less storage for some of that stuff, so we're waiting till we get closer to October to order some of that stuff that goes on that...
So, a lot of that stuff will be in the next budget cycle?
No.
Not even the beginning?
Because it's already been ordered.
Well, it's been ordered, but who won't receive it?
It could be paid for out of the three or fourteen funds. Even if it's paid October one or after, it will be, it's considered an accounts payable because it is ordered.
I should get, I have a question, back to the bills. Uh, how much, you don't say how much money has not been recovered, or what's outstanding? Of all the billings that the billing companies received, what have they not collected?
And I receive a monthly report on that, uh, to go back through and, uh, you know, I can provide anybody with that report, but it's pages and pages long.
How about, how much did that outstanding, how about?
I would have to look at, I couldn't quote that to you right off the top of my head.
Two to three million dollars. I think it should be a point that should be a part of your report that you have submitted so much for the billing, they've cut, recovered X number of dollars, and there's X number of dollars outstanding that not, that not been...
Could you, what collection efforts do you take? I'm just looking at the number of calls you made and all that, and then looking at, under your old rates, you know, the ones you're charging right now, until today, uh, there's, there's some discrepancies. And, uh, I just wonder, when somebody doesn't pay, what collection efforts can you take?
You know, that's a good question. I mean, I took this over in October, I've asked that question several times, what do we do, what do we do, what do we do? I have yet to really get an answer to it.
But, I'm, I'm, so I'm saying that, if a department had, you need to work with the law firm on that, you know, if a law firm collected, or I wanna do this, or I wanna do that, and let us know what you're... That'll be part of your budget request, budgeting, collecting. I don't know what kind of percentage place you can get out of that thing like that. I don't know, there are, there are, like, law firms out there that hand you plates, what kind of container, bases, or what, or percentage, what they collect. They won't look at that.
This, this, the collection firm current now, the building firm related to that, sir?
Yes, they collect, they do collections, I mean, they don't, in other words, they don't quit billing the bill. Uh, and, and I understand, we're, we're talking about, we're talking about two different things. What do they do beyond just billing? I mean, I can send a bill out of my office every month, I mean, if, if someone doesn't wanna pay it, there's nothing forcing them to go pay it. And I understand that's, that's where we're getting at, and, and I think that's, that's something we need to do. Uh, and I, and I'm not so sure that that's ever been done, I, I, I don't think it has. But I am in agreement with that.
I wanna talk to them about that, see what their, their plan B is for the women.
Sure.
All right.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, uh, John, do you get anything to add for some problems? Mr. Prentice, one, anything? Oh, I forgot what your number was. Annex does for G. Garrett.
All right, I'll give a general, one parking lot out here, the gentleman here the other day didn't pass, the handicap didn't pass the state inspection. It's supposed to be a two-degree slope, and it starts off at two degrees, it gets to four degrees at the back, so they have to cut some concrete and patch that up till that can go down, or get that in compliance, and patch it, crack some stuff in there. We discussed all that in our areas, got here while I was here. On the, well, here on the annex, Zane and Rocky and Jason are cleaning units and trying to get these air conditioners working better, so hopefully they are. We did call at the end of the building, the steel drip after that, and we discussed with different engineering people, air conditioning people, about possibly putting dehumidifiers, humidifiers in the fresh air, air intake units. However, we have these units in a room here, and you have to have fresh air blowing into the room by law, a hundred percent fresh air company, because they don't get the outside air like rooftop people do. So, I guess that's a fresh air thing right there. Zane said there's two of these rooms that don't have fresh air, that's in, I'll have to check that out. Um, anyway, there are two fresh air entrances in here, and the best thing to do with humidity is to get, put a dehumidifier in that fresh air intake, so it doesn't blow stuff up. We're still discussing all that. They were working on what we can do about the moisture. As well, jail down there, as of last Friday, uh, they had gotten an extra pool of concrete in section there, and they have a makeup schedule of time lost on the concrete, and according to their makeup schedule, that pool of concrete, they were ten days ahead on their makeup schedule. And supposedly, still, the finished date is December fifteenth, to complete the check, so that can change, but...
Is that occupation date, or is that just completion?
That's a completion date, final inspection, and then the fresh list after that. So, first of the year, get empty, as of last Friday, all subject to change.
We tried a meeting and paid for them, that's that with the...
Pre-construction, or the roof, just pre-construction bid? Yes, we did. And we're at, three contractors, air conditioners, and I think they're all interested. Everyone you employ, and starter. They ask questions and, and get information on it, and we, they'll be getting some answers. Well, they gotta submit their questions in writing, and they'll get answers on them. The bid is scheduled for the twenty-sixth of this month.
All right. Bruce Jones?
At the collection station, the employee we have there, Jesse Jonas, he got sick. He's, uh, he's at home right now, sickly. Mr. Mike Walzneck, the ward administrator, he allowed me to use one of the guys over there, he got one of his guys over, Russell, taking care of him until I can hire a replacement. And more than likely, probably here in the U F Y, I'm gonna have to ask for that position to be a full-time position, because I'm not sure Jesse's coming back.
Question, might have somebody wants to bring stuff to the dump, there's a charge for that, correct? How much is the charge?
Depends what they have.
Okay. Has anybody given any thought, I mean, right now, we've got, County Road three thirty of the, the part of county dump. I mean, and I'm sure that's, I'm not going county road, people dump tires, furniture, or anything else, all right, Tracy? Instead of charging, the dumps, I mean, instead of charging somebody to bring something to the dump to dispose of, why do we pay them to bring stuff to county dump instead of dumping it over the county road? Because that's why they're dumping it out there, they don't wanna pay the charge. So, why aren't we paying them, it'd be a lot cheaper?
I've, I've had that come to me before about making it free for the people.
No, 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 I mean, pay them. You mean, they'll be killing each other for this, bringing it to the county dump.
Yeah, I, I see, I see what you mean, but we can't pay anybody to bring the stuff over there.
Why?
It's like going to San Antonio, all the side of the road to San Antonio, and bring it to us, and pay them.
Right, exactly, it'll be, it'll, it'll be like selling metal to everybody.
Making it, making it free might be one idea, but the, the problem I see in races, there are all kinds of reasons why people do that. Some of it is, they just, they don't wanna take the trouble to come to the dump.
But I, I know that most of the people that dump out of County Road three thirty live and get it.
Yeah, and, and some of it is, some of it is just habit, and then some of it is that they don't wanna pay the fee, probably more than anything else, they don't wanna have to figure out, maybe they can take it there, and, and get all the way over there to dump.
Some considerations, we're gonna have a full-time guys, and nobody's gonna bring trash from San Antonio. I mean, that's just ludicrous statement. But if people, if people live in the county, have a wage, they'd be paying five dollars a load of tires.
You know what, Mr. Yard, that's, that's, you probably say that, but let me tell you what, every tire dealer that does his tire shop will wait till he gets, he, who collects a tire, and will bring you that tire, and you gonna pay somebody X number of dollar tire?
No, Rudy's paying several dollars per tire, you get rid of, uh...
We had the last big guy just cleaned up, we collected every tire from every person.
I guess my point is, the commission court, it says you're just doing the same old thing, start, you know, hate to use this term, start digging outside the box and try to fix the problem, instead of just sitting there kicking a can down the road.
I like that, see possibly allowing a free day of disposal, but not paying somebody. There's no way, we wouldn't be able to keep enough cash on hand. We're not gonna cut a check for every time that they hear that dump's a...
I mean, on our road, we just got tires just terrible. My son stopped the other day, was coming back with a load of lumber from Yorktown, and just filled the trailer with, with wire and tires and, and tin on, on roads that have never been dumped on before, and, and, and we, I can't tell you how many tires just all through the county roads are being dumped. And we've never had a, a real dumping problem out what we are, but it is, it's becoming more so prevalent.
Well, how are we doing more long?
And hopefully, the, the, the deputy executive start reporting some of...
And hopefully, the, the deputies, they can start enforcing some of that stuff, as well as maybe a code enforcement person go around, start doing some other issues.
I'd like to see us eventually put a, an eighteen wheeler, a van, and, and one in Gillette, the county yard, and one, and one at the dump here in Karnes City, and bring your tires as you get them, put them in there, when we just take the tires.
See what I'm saying?
We, we, we thought outside the box, we thought about that, what, twelve, fifteen years ago, the problem was, when I first started, I think it was two thousand, two thousand and one, they had done that before, and people started throwing dead dogs, and carcasses in those boxes and everything. I don't care if we put the, I don't, I'm not saying I don't care, I care about the department, but I don't care if this person, that if we put it for free, the people that are trash are still gonna dump their trash on the county roads, not to waste the money to come over here. I don't care if it's for free, there's people out there that are trash, the same as what they're dumping on the road, they're still gonna do it, doesn't matter.
Looking at our current agents inside of my.
That's my, my period.
I'm glad it is my game.
You're not gonna change people, you can't change people, they are who they are.
Let's, 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 let's just start shooting them, code enforcement.
I don't do that either. But you're, you're, you're frustration with situations, understood. I have some.
You got the same, you have the same deal.
Not as bad.
The city county had a, had a cleanup day here last week, they had to help trash off, and they, they had, they talked with their supplier and their body in boxes, and I think they hung them on a block brush and stuff, by the way. But they, from what I heard, the ladies that, that are, said that was a pretty big success, and so does their code enforcement person.
Well, what we may have, what we have is, if we can't get people's things to trash somewhere else where they should take it, and they're gonna be a dump, uh, we have to figure out how to get it off the road, maybe get them the stuff cleaned up.
There's a solution there, probably, is that.
No, I don't, I don't know. But that maybe is, we may have to get up there, we have to spend the money, instead of spending money offering people money for their tires, or we may have to spend money to get somebody to go out there and pick it all up.
I said, I said the most thing to do, when we talked about the last one, there's, people are gonna throw in the same places, there's not gonna just be everywhere. They're gonna get used to throwing it, I ran eight years out there, you know, the county roads out there, I know exactly what I'm talking about, but they throw in the same spots, under the same bridges. Every once in a while, you may find them scattered, but no, people get a trend on throwing it the same thing. Put some cameras up there, we discussed it years and years ago, put some cameras up there, give them some healthy fines, put them in jail, do something. You know, that's, that's my way, cause we're gonna put people to go out there and pick it up, we're just giving the people that are throwing the trash a free ride, we need to bust the heck out of them.
Saying, you know, people that have, this problem is not small. It ain't small.
If we put some money out for some cameras, and bust the heck out of some people, and give them healthy fines, teach them a lesson, maybe the other people will.
Unemployed snipers out of the military.
I don't know.
Can I ask you, where, I live on the same, lived on the same county road for twenty-six years, so actually, three or four of them, quite frequently. I've never had dumping like we've had just recently, and particularly tires. So, I'm not gonna, I mean, I understand your point saying they, they frequent the same creeks and whatever, but this is something that's new, I mean, I have not seen it in the, in, in the hands level that we have seen it lately. So if they're putting it in a truck or on a trailer, and they're driving it all the way out to the southeastern far corner of Karnes County to dump it on our county roads.
Maybe they're coming after you, the other county from where you live from.
Well, I'm just saying, there's, well, if they're, if they're gonna put it on something to, to, to bring the trash, I mean, if they didn't have to pay, wouldn't they be, wouldn't it be highly likely that they might take it to the dump?
There, the percentage, yes, maybe, but if it's thirty mile dollars, what are you talking about, the dump, how far is it away from here?
I, I drive thirty miles to get over here.
So it's thirty miles, thirty and thirty, sixty miles, and gas prices right now, what are you up there, probably gonna dump it on that county road? I mean, I'm just saying, five percent maybe would have the decency to do it, that's sixty mile run.
Well, I just don't know who's gonna pick it up, because road and bridge doesn't pick it up, I haven't seen a patrolman out on my road ever in twenty-six years, so who ends up picking it up, it's me, my son and my family, and it ends up going, we have to do something.
That's the thing about road and bridge, when you stuck a, a van, you could talk, he's tired, like, every, every tire, when they get a van, and the road and bridge brings a tire, or they see a tire, pick it up, put it in the van, and be all set to go, when the commission van is filled up.
Why can't you use community service people to pick up trash off the road, instead of always saying that the community service people have to be supervised by somebody from the county?
Well, I tried, we tried that years.
Don't you think that if they go over there and they can do those, the trouble, they can be out there picking up trash on their own instead of taking someone else's time in the county?
Yeah, we tried that years ago, and it's a liability issue, having them on the side of those roads, we've gone through all that.
All right, in the permits department, we collected a hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars and twenty cents for the month of the month.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Nice job. Anybody have anything else for you to report for? Well, uh, much of the journey? On favor?
Bye.